We're on here. This is the planning board meeting of June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. It's, uh, seven o'clock and it's the Carver Town Hall, Room One. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
I see the sun is out and I guess we're clear of any tornadoes coming over Carver tonight. So.
For now.
For now. So, um.
There's no new business.
Yeah, we have, uh, a meeting scheduled that's a little after seven now. We have, uh, seven fifteen, seven thirty, and seven forty-five. So I guess we'll go to, uh, other business tonight and, um, we'll start there. Uh, does anybody have any planning board notes they'd like to start with? As we're gonna, uh, fifteen minutes here.
There's a, uh, so- softball fundraiser this Sunday down at the, uh, I'm sorry. The Saturday over at the Fields for Brad White, a local, uh, guy that's having some medical problems. So if anybody can make it down there, a bunch of raffle prizes, things, I really appreciate it.
Excellent.
What did you say, Sunday, Saturday?
It's on Saturday.
Saturday.
Yep.
Anybody else? No?
I'm good for today.
Uh, planners' notes.
Okay. Um, I'll first start with the master plan update. Um, the Redevelopment Authority last night voted to enter into contract for eleven thousand dollars with Serped to do the outreach and the visioning and the polling to try to generate, um, ideas from the public and do all the public participation for the master plan. And that'll begins on July first. And in fact, Serped's gonna be at your July fourteenth meeting to make a presentation on the master plan and the roles and what the timeline, which I know I've given you in the past. I can also tell you that, um, the, um, the town, we have a contract ready to be signed, um, with Serped for the meat and potatoes of the master plan. We are, and I, I don't know the exact number, but it's a little over a thousand dollars shy. But I did talk to the CPC chairman and one member and they have agreed to put it on their agenda for Thursday to take out of their admin fund. So Lord willing, by, um, Thursday night, we'll be fully funded for the master plan thanks to a lot of people and a lot of agencies and boards. I should add that BDC is also committed to funds which they've invoiced with, uh, the Redevelopment Authority. So it hasn't been easy, but, uh... So then hopefully on Monday, the town administrator can sign the contract or Friday and we'll be fully funded and we can, uh, start the process. The other thing is, I did put some pressure on you guys that I really think we need to, uh, appoint a chairman who can lead this master plan. And, and I did meet with Serped, you know, I'm filling some time here too. But we talked about having two visioning sessions, both at the library probably. One in September and one in November. And the first one in September is to generate ideas, see what the issues are, what direction do you want the town to go in? And then in November, and I should add, in September, to see what the community, how the community wants to move forward. Do they wanna move forward with a master plan committee? Do they, do you want it to go just to existing boards and commissions? I mean, I tend to think that we should have as many residents involved in part of the decision-making as possible. Um, I don't know what kind of turnout we'll have. I know when I got here, well, it was about eight years ago, wasn't it, Will?
Yeah.
We had one of those, we had a hundred and fifty people there.
It was a good turnout.
It was amazing, I mean, we had 'em sitting in the, in the bookshelves, you know, it was a lot of people.
Yeah, we had to, Dr. Mullen had to s- stop the meeting 'cause it was like ten o'clock.
Right, it was too much. I never expected that. I don't know if that'll happen again, but, you know, there's a lot of issues in town. And, and, you know, the schools, infrastructure, open space, agriculture, you know, I can go on and on. Renewable energy, which you're gonna hear tonight. Economic development is huge. Um, so I, I think, I, you know, I, I know the last meeting I had asked you to think about who you'd want to chair the whole thing. Uh, and I think I still am asking you that, but who's gonna be on the committee? I think we can wait till September.
Well, I think it's goo- good to know, um, for the public to know that the existing master plan hasn't been, has been in existence for...
Thirteen years.
Thirteen years.
Oh, fourteen years, fourteen years.
Somewhere around that neck of the woods. And the town has accomplished a lot of steps. Uh, it was brought out when we had that last visioning session, how much the town has actually proceeded from what people had inputs were when the first, when the master plan was done thirteen years ago. That's why it's extremely important that we reach out to the public for this and get what your vision is for this town. It's not a planning board issue, it's not a conservation issue. It's really what the town's people are looking forward to do in our town in the next ten years, fifteen years. What type of development? Infrastructure, infrastructure's huge. And with the potential of what we have coming up and where we've been and where we're going, this is essential. And that's why that's, it costs a pretty penny. This is an eighty thousand dollar master plan that the taxpayers are paying for. Um, and that's why I know that the Redevelopment Authority and the BDC, the Business Development Committee, felt so strongly about getting involved with us and taking on that one piece. So I encourage everybody to participate, as many people, we have good assets in this town that can help us. So it's gonna be a long process, but it'll be a good product when it's done.
So, having said that, on the fourteenth, Serped will come in, in between the fourteenth, and they're gonna ask you to, actually, we might have picked the date, actually, in September, pending your, your availability. Um... How far away is it? I think it was a Monday or a Wednesday, I don't remember. Um, well... Okay, on the twenty-third of September, it's a Wednesday night, that's what we were thinking. We're thinking six to nine, we'll have it, you know, we'll have some refreshments there. We'll have all the interactive video and as much interactiveness as we can. I think in between the July meeting and this September meeting, I'd like to meet with at least one or two members to keep working with Serped on how we put all this together. Um, and off we go. And then, and then after the November meeting, or maybe after the September meeting, we start going into subcommittees and, and different things to, um, to see, uh, what the priorities are for the different categories. And the categories of transportation, land use, environmental, infrastructure, historic, education. And I'm probably forgetting some, but, um, those type of categories.
So we'll have to start thinking about it, chairman, for all this, uh, what, by what time?
I think, uh, I think I'd like, uh, let's see what Serped has to say on the fourteenth and we'll go from there. I'm putting it off again. I know I'm keeping you thinking. Um, the other thing I had down, I, I got a couple updates, but, you know, just to fill a little bit more time, but, um, I unfortunately have not been able to meet with Peter Allegrini. I know he wanted to meet and does want to meet with me about this whole notion of, um, reducing the fee for special permits with so- for signage. Uh, I haven't been able to meet with him, unfortunately. And, um, I did meet with, and this is, and the other reason I needed, uh, I have on the agenda is these SSID, the, um, design guidelines for the Innovation District that town meeting passed. I did meet with Mass DOT, with the town administrator last week. They have bought the Shave property, which is about five or six acres, closed on it.
Awesome.
They are looking to buy some more acreage to increase the amount of land. And they're hoping to close on that, I'm not gonna reveal which one it is, 'cause there might be some propriety there, um, uh, by July thirty-first. So they're ready to go. And then they're gonna immediately start the marketing and the, um, the dispersment process with, with the team, uh, with the town as a partner, in some role, in some role. Um, so I need to set the, the public hearing for these guidelines. Now, if you recall, Peter wanted to reduce the fee, you need a public hearing to reduce or increase the fee. So I'll leave it up to you, we can delay it again to the fourteenth. I'm running out of time on that, or we can just schedule it, we can schedule it with the design guidelines and I could make some, um, language in the public hearing notice that we are entertaining, reducing the fee, whatever you want.
You said that Mass DOT is maybe by the thirty-first of July?
They are hoping to close on this other piece of property. The way they left it with us is if they can't close by the thirty-first, they're moving on without it.
So they're ready to go, so I don't wanna delay anything. But we just set the public hearing. What are you thinking for a date?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds alright.
I'm gonna suggest July twenty-eighth.
Seven fifteen?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for the, um, design guidelines for seven twenty-eight at seven fifteen.
Second. Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, got a couple minutes left. Um, just, I've been working with, um, the, um, property across from the new Dunkin' Donuts. They're still, they've now surveyed the property. They are doing a traffic study, which they have to bring the Mass DOT to, you know, if you remember, they need a little sliver of property from the state. And, and the state was very open, but they said you're gonna have to prove to us that us giving you this sliver will not impact the off-ramp. And the off-ramp is about nine hundred feet away, so I think it's an easy sell. We're only talking about three hundred square feet. We're not talking a lot of pro- piece of property here. So I think that's gonna move forward. I did talk to, um, to one of the owners of the option today. Um, I also was told that the property, um, across from where More Dogs is, is very close to being closed upon. And I had told you about having five apartments and a little retail on the bottom. I haven't seen the design, they'll be coming to you very shortly, I assume. Um... I think that's it for now.
Do you have any progress on the solar? A little funny for a solar project, progress?
Um, I know that there are directional drilling now. Um, I know they were out there yesterday, I think they were out there today, you were out there, weren't you?
Yep.
Um, I don't know, you know, I'm assuming you're reading the blogs and Facebook and everything else about supposed issues out there. Uh, I've been out there three times, the town administrator's been out there once, Mass DOT's been out there twice, the Conservation Commission's been out there at least four times. No one's found an issue. I am gonna go out next week probably with Mass Audubon.
How much time's been involved with this?
I can't, you know, it's, uh, a lot. Uh, myself, probably eight hours. I can't imagine how much time of the Conservation Agent or the board members or the secretarial staff. I can get a guesstimate for you.
Appreciate that.
Um, you know, secretariales, 'cause there's been Freedom of, um, Information Act requests, at least two, that, from my office, um, and from, you know, the bigger office. Know the town administrator's been up there.
Well, you're reading an awful lot on Facebook.
I try not to.
The papers, so... Just for interest.
Yeah, I, I will, um, get you an estimate hopefully by next meeting.
Thanks.
Hey, look at that.
Alright, it's a little after seven fifteen. Now, these, uh, this first meeting is a continuance?
Nope, none of them are.
Do I have a, I don't?
Oh, do we have the public hearing notice?
I don't have a public hearing notice.
Not in the folder? Hold on. We got one.
There, I'll do it.
Yeah, and I, I may, yeah, I'll, I'll need it for the other two meetings that we have.
Thank you.
Alright, and, uh, we have a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at seven fifteen PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, on the application of Matthew Argen, South Coast Kitchen Design, requesting a special permit pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw to utilize an existing structure located on two forty-seven B Tremont Street in Carver, Mass for a kitchen design showroom and associated offices. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board Chair Bruce Maggie. Published dates, June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and June twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Do we have anybody, where's our table?
Yes, I, well, I kinda moved it because I know one of the applicants wants to do a little PowerPoint. Um, Matthew's here, Matthew, I, I think he was here to introduce himself a couple meetings ago, but maybe explain what you'd like to do and what it all entails.
Okay, good evening, board. As it describes in the, um, application, what we're looking to do with the old Benjamin Ellis School is turn it into a retail showroom for kitchen cabinetry and bath cabinetry. We're not going to alter the interior or the exterior of the building structurally. We're gonna keep the, um, the aesthetics that it has now. That's one of the appealing parts of the building for us. What we'd like to do is in the, in the classrooms on the, uh, first floor, we're going to, um, place some wing walls and put our cabinetry displays in there. And then we will have, um, myself and right now currently, we have another designer, and I have an opening, so we'll, we'll have three to four employees running out of the building. And, um, we'll be doing the retail sales there. But no product moves in and out of the building, we have a redelivery service for that. So basically, it's just a showroom to show our clients, uh, what we have to offer.
Um, in your packet, you'll see, um, Matthew's application, I put the assessor card, actually, he provided it, um, the assessor, a little survey map. Um, he's also applied for a sign permit, um, just using the exact same, um, features as the previous occupant. And I also gave this to the board of health, I thought that, um, it'd be a good idea just for the record to make sure that there's, uh, adequate septic and water. And as you see, um, from the letter, there is.
Any questions by anyone on the board?
No, I'm pretty good with it, I think it's a nice use for that. Low traffic. No big truck traffic or anything for the area, so I think it's a great use of, of the building. It's a beautiful building.
What, what are the hours you s- you're gonna be open?
Right now, we're operating from eight to four PM. It may end up be expanding eight to five PM. And then we're open on Saturdays, right now in the morning, we may expand that to be a little bit later in the afternoon.
Chad, did you have anything?
No, it sounds nice, it's great.
Now, the last time you were here, you said you were gonna use the, the first floor of the building for your business and you were gonna use, and maybe I missed it 'cause I was looking at some other papers, you, you were gonna use the downstairs for something else?
Right, the lower level, there's two classrooms identical to on the first floor, if you're familiar with the building. And what we like to set that up is an opportunity for contractors that have to do their annual, their renewals for their construction supervisor licenses, to be able to, um, host classes there for them.
That's a great idea. Was there anything that Sean had to look at, uh, with this, it was, uh...
No, I mean, it's, he's not changing, he's not doing anything. Everything's ins- inside.
Intact, yeah.
Other than I wanted just to confirm the, the, the water and septic for a different kinda use. So it's, it's a little similar with the education on the bottom.
And we have, uh, correct number of parking spaces out there and...
Needs less than what the school needed.
Is this a purchase or a rent?
This is a purchase.
Wonderful.
It is a public hearing, let's go, Chad.
Alright, yes, it is a public hearing. So is there, uh, anyone that would like to, uh, say anything, ask any questions? Have any comments to make about this, uh... This, uh, South Coast Kitchen Designs? No, nobody's here for this.
Oh, Joe's here.
I was here this morning.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, for the board, this is Joe Mix, he's the chairman, are you still chairman of the Ad Commission?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, chairman of the Ad Commission, and he lives fairly close to this.
Alright, uh, since, uh, no one else has any, uh, comments, I guess it entertained a, uh, motion to...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, special permit for South Coast Kitchen Designs, including our sign with the standard stuff that we use.
Standard conditions?
Yep.
I don't know of any extraordinary conditions.
I don't think, I couldn't come up with any.
You're pretty good at finding them.
I usually think of something.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? Uh, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to Carver.
Thank you, board, appreciate it.
So when are you gonna be moving in?
We hope to close the end of July, and I'd like to turn it around because we become busy again in September, so we're hoping that we can turn it around a lot. There's really nothing to be done except for install at this place.
Building's beautiful.
It is.
Clark, Clark did a great job.
He did.
Congratulations, Clark. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Been a long run. Been a very long run.
Uh, board, Clark owns the building. And he's a generally great guy.
Alright, uh, since it isn't seven thirty yet, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes of June ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Um, they're not done yet.
Oh. So we'll go by that and we'll go to, uh, do you have any correspondence?
No, we got five minutes now.
Uh-uh.
Um, I gotta think of something, huh? I wanted to introduce Joe Salvetti to the board, Joe is with Fafford. What's the name of your firm, FST? Them two. Joe is a licensed site professional and, um, we hired him along with Sean, um, for the Route Forty-four project, he's a little early. I wanted Sean here for the North Carver, which is the next item, but, uh, Joe is here specifically for the Route Forty-four project.
Awesome.
Actually, Joe is a licensed site professional, he has some comments about, um, the landfill. I know his firm is dealing with the closure on that and will be working with, um, Morse Engineering and Southern Sky, but that's not until another five minutes.
How about the property in South Matter Road?
Bunch of soccer fields.
Oh, um, the, Chad's asking about that strip of land that Makepeace owns between the golf course and Wade Street.
Oh, yeah.
There was an option on it by...
PT USA, UK Elite.
Crusader Night, United, or...
Yeah, I think it was PT USA, UK Elite, something like that.
Something like that. Unfortunately, that fell through. That fell through. Um, so they, uh, I got an email on Monday about it. Uh, Michael, the town administrator, asked me to contact him, 'cause we hadn't heard from him. I had meetings with, with the town of Plymouth about extending the water line to him. The selectmen voted to request that water to come across the town boundary, they were prepared to enter into a intermunicipal agreement. And then they withdrew and it was just, I guess, cost prohibitive. Um, you know, interestingly, Chad brings that up, I've been working with that group or certain variations of that group for quite a while, looking at a host of sites in Carver, and I'm sure they're all over southeastern Mass, but...
They were looking at it, they're not, so...
Oh, really?
Okay.
You wanna give an update on the, um, expansion of the storage for the water district?
Well, you're the water commissioner.
I wasn't trying to go there. Well, the, uh, expansion for the water district is underway, uh, construction is underway. The tanks are supposed to be showing up...
Monday.
Monday. Completion is supposed to be by the twenty-eighth?
Well, Monday's the twenty-ninth, so...
Yeah, so that ain't happening, but probably like the middle of July, we'll have completion, we'll have an additional forty thousand gallons of storage, which is greatly needed. And it's gonna give us more potential for water, 'cause we needed it.
Yeah, and it's gonna allow the water district to sell more water, keep more revenue coming, less burden on the taxpayers, and get you closer to being solvent, which is what any water district wants eventually.
And we voted not to raise the rates last night, so that's a good thing.
That's right, that's right. And I, I can say, you know, you know, the board approved the dog mall last, two weeks ago, there'll be a hookup there. I know at your next meeting on the fourteenth, you have the conversion of the church, that'll be a hookup. We just had a house on Plymouth, next to Kids Count, they hooked up. Um, I hear the house next to them is gonna be hooking up. The properties, the two properties I talked about, across from Dunkin' Donuts and across from More Dogs, are both hookups.
Yep.
So...
That'll help immensely.
It's been busy in our office, very busy.
So as, as new businesses are coming in, we're, you're getting more customers for the, for the water?
Yeah, you know, over the last year, even, well, over the last year, you've seen fifty-eight kinda see it, we had Southeast, I mean, South Coast Development, you had Shorey Precast, you had the Norfolk Power, the Dollar General, Emerald Landscaping, all on this corridor. But now you're starting to see the movement up there. People wanna be close to Route Forty-four, is it clear?
Well, thank you. That's, uh, good news for everybody.
I, I'll, I, I can use a few, I was gonna say kill, I don't like that, a couple more minutes. As you know, we have the Community Development Block Grant Program, we had a, a status meeting today with the town of Halifax, who's our partner. And we are going just great guns, I'm so pleased with the way this program's going. We have now, um, um, have fifteen of the seventeen houses under, if not contract, at least we're in the, uh, in, um, work order stage for, uh, Car- uh, Carver and Halifax. Eleven in Carver and four in Halifax, we still have three more to go. And we gave Halifax, you know, Halifax is a little slower trying to find people, but we gave them till August, the end of August to, and if we can't find people in Halifax, then we're just gonna help Carver people. Also in this program is childcare assistance for needy families and great guns as well. Um, and the same situation, we filled up all our allocations for Carver, we still have a few left in Halifax. If we don't get them done by the end of August, we're gonna help more families in Carver. So I know that our grant administrator is very pleased and it's gonna just posture us for the next round even better, so... I, I didn't know it was, I'm there every day and I didn't realize how well we're doing.
And how much was that for?
Nine hundred and, nine hundred and five thousand.
What was last year's?
It was two years ago, it was six hundred and eighty. And it took longer, it was the first time we ever had one. Um, and we ran into a lot of learn, uh, we had a learning curve and it took us a year and a half, they asked you to try to finish it in a year. But it took us a year and a half and we didn't get the next round. And then we got this, and I think... And then we got this, and I think, knock on wood, I think we might finish, we might finish by December thirty-first.
What type of, uh, work are you doing to the Carver residents, for the Carver work residents?
Any, everything and anything, septic, um, windows, electrical, plumbing, insulation, roofs. Um, we shifted our target area to South Carver this time, so we're getting more, and Great Meadow, so we're getting people in the Great Meadow neighborhood. I saw the addresses today, it's not anonymous like the other program, but, um, um, quite a few people in, um, Pine Tree Village, helping them with their, um, mobile home park, and now it's resident owned, so I think we're gonna see, you know, high tide lifts all boats kind of thing, so, very, I, I didn't expect that, I didn't expect it to be that good.
That's great.
Certainly is, thank you, Jack. All right, so it's, uh, seven thirty, so we'll go to the public hearing for the Southern Sky, uh, Renewable Energy. And, so I'll read the, uh, public hearing notice, in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at seven thirty PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, on the application of Southern Sky Renewable Energy Carver LLC requesting site plan review and a special permit pursuant to sections twenty-three hundred, thirty-five, eighty, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw, located on North Main and Green Streets, map sixteen, lots twelve and thirteen in Carver, Mass, for construction, constructing a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array to produce approximately two megawatts of power, covering approximately twenty-two acres. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated, a copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair, published dates, June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and June twelfth, two thousand and fifteen.
Mister Chair, before they start, I just wanted to update the public and the board, um, this is a town landfill, which we've not done before, it's the only town landfill, you know, I think. Um, we went out to bid, um, I don't know, maybe a year ago, something like that. Um, we were fortunate enough to get a bid proposal from Southern Sky, the town administrator at the time, I think, was Michael or Jim Purcell, one or the other, and the selectmen awarded the, uh, bid to Southern Sky. As you know, in April, town meeting voted to approve a tax agreement, and, um, that tax agreement has been executed by the selectmen. So they've been just waiting for Eversource, how surprising, and I'm sure you're gonna hear some of that today, but there they are.
Thank you. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. Run through the project, my name is Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. I had submitted a letter late in the day today to Jack via email, I'm gonna pass out some copies of that and then run through the project.
They do have that in their packet, but maybe Sean, Sean doesn't have it, I didn't, I forgot to give it to Sean.
This project is a two-megawatt solar array proposed at the North Carver landfill, um, I prepared this graphic which kind of overlays the landfill.
Hey Greg, could you grab the mic and take it with you, just for the public?
Thanks. Sure. As I was just saying, this is a graphic that presents an overlay of the North Carver landfill, um, with the proposed two-megawatt solar array over it, to kind of orient you with the plan here. Uh, on the left side or the west side here, this is North Main Street, Route fifty-eight, we have the Carver Fire Station in Green Street up here. This is the subject property that we're working on, this is the existing landfill cap at the North Carver landfill. Uh, you just permitted this past year Emerald Landscape, uh, supply just to the south of this project. And to the east of this project is, uh, Muddy Pond, this dark, uh, area that you see. Off of Muddy Pond, there are some wetland, bordering vegetated wetlands that encompass a portion of the site. Site in total is twenty-one point six acres, our site, as we're showing it, we're proposing the solar array over five acres of that site. Um, all of the array is in primarily three locations, you'll see along the southern or the southeastern corner here, we have an array, this portion of the landfill, we have an array over the top of the cap, and then we have the northern array up here, which is behind the Carver Fire Station. In looking at the town's bylaws, the bylaws have two very specific requirements or two setbacks that we had to comply with, with this layout. They have a two-hundred-foot setback from a residentially zoned property, our plans depict that, um, this northern property line, um, is a two-hundred-foot buffer to the residences to the north, and then along the frontage along North Main Street and commercial properties to the south, it's a fifty-foot buffer zone. Uh, the project complies and respects the two-hundred to the residences as well as the fifty-foot buffer zones to the adjacent properties. This, this array, um, the actual installation of the panels, um, the installation of the panels will be placed on a crushed stone bed. The panels will be placed, and then a concrete ballast block will be placed over the bottom of the panel framing to hold it in place. It doesn't require any pads of concrete to be poured or any sort of excavation of the landfill area where the solar array is going. The power that's generated from this will run to the front right here, where we're proposing a inverter, two inverters and a transformer pad. Connection will then be made to the electric utility out in North Main Street, connection to the grid. Access to the site, there's two existing access points off of North Main Street, primarily we'll be using this access here. We are proposing, um, gated access around all of the solar arrays. This is a newly proposed gate around, a gate and fence around the northern array, there's existing fencing around the remainder of the site for the southern portion in the top of the landfill. There's an existing gravel access road that runs around the base, and then there's a gravel access that comes up to the top of the cap. We were proposing to use those accesses, uh, for this project. We've proposed erosion controls along the eastern side of the property, we filed with conservation, portions of this work are located in the buffer zone to their resource area. We've also filed with Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, a portion of the site from here to the east is located within endangered species habitat, we expect both of those, conservation and NHESP, to, uh, favorably rule on the project. All of the work is located on top of the existing landfill area, we're not removing new vegetation areas with any of the work that we're proposing. At the technical review meeting, there were a number of comments, the letter that we submitted today, uh, primarily addresses those comments, although I expect that we'll be submitting probably a revised set of plans based on some additional feedback tonight, I know there's some additional talk about possible upgrades to the access road that we originally weren't anticipating, um, and then potentially trying to revise the solar array a little bit to get a little bit more power out of it, we're looking at locations, um, possibly behind the fire department or in this location near the detention base, and I think there was some concern about, um, potential for the town to be able to construct a water tower in the future, and potential for the town to possibly expand the fire department facilities in the future, so, um, we, we plan on making a couple of small revisions to this plan as you see it. I can run through the comments on the letter that we had.
This is at the end of your packet, yep.
Comments generally were focused around construction staging, and we had, well, one of them was along construction staging, we had proposed a construction staging area, this portion of the plant, we locate that on, I think, sheet four of our plan set, which is the erosion control, um, construction methodology sheet. There was a question regarding lighting, we're not proposing any lighting facilities associated with this project. There was a question regarding signage, we're not proposing any entrance or facility signs out here at the road, the only signs would be, you know, just generally around the transformers or any high voltage signs or anything that would be required by code, but no signs on the facility itself. There were some questions about landscaping, and what we'll be doing is proposing some vegetative screening around the transformer pad themselves. We'll also look at doing some entrance plantings at the entranceway onto the site. We revised the crushed stone that goes underneath these solar arrays, we went from a three-quarter inch stone to a two-inch stone. Where a portion of the site is sloped, uh, the two-inch stone will probably provide a little bit better stability and less potential for erosion, so we went to a larger stone diameter. We revised our erosion control between the project and the wetlands, we originally had it on the up gradient side of the access road, we're now proposing it on the wetland side of the access road. We've added the proposed water tower location that the town may or may not install in the future, they had respected a no-build area, so we've added that to the plans. And we've begun talk with GZA, who's the geotechnical consultant with us, that I imagine will be talking with FST about the post-closure use. Post-closure use permit has to be filed with DEP before this project can be constructed, uh, that'll be ongoing during this process. That, that's kind of a quick synopsis of the project, the, the outstanding items, again, I expect to be making some revisions to landscaping at the front of the project, possibly some upgrades to the gravel access road, and potentially some slight reconfiguration of this solar array in that area. We're scheduled to go in front of Conservation Commission at their July meeting, um, we haven't had any comments back from their commission or any public comments back yet. Turn it over to the board.
Mister Chairman, before you open it up with, I don't know if Frank or Mike wanna kind of introduce who Southern Sky is, some of the board members may remember them on, from the Ravenbrook project, but I think it's a good idea to give a little background on who you are.
Thank you, uh, my name is Frank McMahon, uh, for those of you who have not met me, we've met most of you with our project here in Carver, this is our second project in the town of Carver, we built the Ravenbrook landfill, uh, solar facility, which became operational about eighteen months ago. Most of you have been out there and toured it at some particular point in time. So, as Jack said, Southern Sky Renewable Energy, which is my company, my colleague Mike Harrington to my right, um, we are based in Boston, and we have built solar projects in the town of Canton on their landfill, uh, we built the Greenfield project in the town of Berkeley, uh, we're in the process of building a proj, another project in Berkeley on a waste management landfill, the town Hudson, uh, on a waste management landfill, um, and, uh, we've got a project in Dayton that we're starting, a project in Cushinget that is just, uh, getting off the ground as well. So we've got a lot of activity going on in, in Massachusetts on landfills and town-owned, some privately owned, um, Ravenbrook is an example of a privately owned facility. And we're here to, as, as Greg just presented this project, it's been about a year or so since we were here with, for the lease and the tax agreement. We've had, uh, a considerable process with Eversource, uh, getting through an impact study and them doing their thing, we finally got, uh, you know, an agreement with them about upgrades and interconnection costs and things of that sort. As Jeff pointed out, the interconnection point, uh, will be right, almost right at that main entrance point where it is now, um, and again, it'll be very similar to the other interconnection, you see Ravenbrook and things of that sort. So our construction pattern, our construction process is very similar to what you saw in Ravenbrook, it's exactly the same racking system, exactly the same ballasted system, as Jeff pointed out. We will probably change modules, we used, I think, Jinko up on, uh, Ravenbrook, or could probably use a different vendor, uh, here. As Jeff pointed out, um, there's no lighting, um, and the project is sized at two megawatts, the magic of that, and that's why when you see, if you see the top of the landfill, you see a, a, kind of a, a aisle, if you will, separation down the middle of it, the reason for that is that's where the property line is, the landfill is actually consists of two parcels, two separate parcels. So by Massachusetts Department of Energy regulations, we can only have one megawatt on each parcel, that's the maximum we can have, so that's why you have that line, uh, to qualify for net metering and, and the rest of it. So, um, we have an offtake agreement with a major healthcare provider out here, and actually on Cape Cod, um, and they will be purchasing the net metering credits that we generate from this facility. So that offtake agreement is just about to be executed with, uh, with that particular facility, uh, so we're ready to, we're ready to move forward. Our construction team is gonna consist of, from an engineering point of view, Jeff's firm, uh, GZA will be our geotechnical consultant, much like Raven, Ravenbrook, they will work with, Fay Spofford in, in, in the town's closure process and then the post-close use process, um, they're a very experienced, uh, geotechnical engineering firm, have great experience working with Mass DEP in this region. Our construction team will be, uh, based, uh, Synergy Solar from Plymouth, uh, a company based in Plymouth, Mass, will be our construction company, and then from there we'll, you know, electricians and things of that sort will work out from there, so we're not really that far down the road, but. So we're looking forward to get moving, we've got the project financed, um, we're ready to rock and roll as soon as we get through the town permitting process and the public hearing this evening. We're anxious to get started, it's been a long time coming.
Thank you. Sean, did you have anything to say before I?
Could I, before we get to Sean?
Sure.
With all deference to Sean, uh, we have Deputy Jermaine here, and I, uh, he, he told me he was coming, and I thought it'd be good if he kind of commented on some of the not concerns, but some of the accommodations that the fire department would like, if you don't mind, Mister Chairman.
Sounds good.
We're usually not honored with Deputy Jermaine here. You're gonna have to use the mic, deputy.
Would you, anyway's good?
Anyway's good.
Uh, good evening to the board and, uh, the applicant, ladies and gentlemen, the public. Obviously, um, so we go through a process, um, when a project like this comes to town, and, uh, that process results in a, what we call a technical review meeting, where all the different departments in town get together, and they review a particular project and make comments on items that pertain to them, and obviously, in our case, that's public safety. And some of the comments, I don't know, Jack, do you want me to just read them right down on the list, or do you want me to paraphrase them?
The two big ones, I think, uh.
So, in listening to the presentation, uh, obviously, we can tell that there's been some dialogue back and forth, um, and already some work done on some of the, uh, comments that we've made. I think one of the biggest things that you'll find, uh, from public safety standpoint is access, access is one of our major, major concerns uh, to any project, and in particular, something that's kind of cut off from the norm, I mean, this is a site that will be gated, uh, and locked, and, um, God forbid, someone goes in there at some point to do readings, to do maintenance, to do, uh, any types of those things, and, uh, our job is to get to them when they need help, whether it be medical, fire attention, police, whatever it may be. So one of the bigger things that we look at when we look at a project is access, and how are we gonna get, um, people in there, emergency, you know, emergency people in there, their vehicles, uh, first of all, getting in, and then obviously getting out is, is the other concern. Excuse me, the other concern, so, um, so we looked at the project, this project is a little bit different than, say, the Ravenbrook project. The solar panels on the top of this landfill cover basically, um, the whole flat spot with no roadway to get us around. Whereas Ravenbrook's a little bit different, we have a road up the middle, and then we can traverse around the panels at the top of the landfill. This one's a little bit different in a sense that we have a road that runs, and I know it's difficult to see, but it, it will kind of run up the center and then stop, so we really only have access to this side of the solar array. So if we had an issue with anybody, a patient or a fire or anything in any of these other areas, we have to traverse, I don't know what, do you know what the incline is on the landfill itself? Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty steep incline, and so this is kind of out of the norm for us, where we're gonna be, potentially, if we had a fire up there, we'd be trying to bring hoses and things off of trucks, up that steep incline and, and do our job, so. So this is a little bit different, and really puts some emphasis for us on the perimeter road that goes all the way around the array. And so our first comment talks about, um, it says the proposed project does appear to have an access road around the perimeter of the solar array for emergency vehicles. However, it's, um, it's in, uh, disrepair, um, and probably would not support emergency vehicle traffic. We typically, on projects like this, we would require a twelve-foot and width road, and then we, to that clear, and structures on two feet on both sides made of, uh, an all-weather surface so that we can get fire trucks, and we gauge. We gauge all projects based on the large piece of equipment that would bring up there, and that would be obviously a fire truck. And in this case, we're gauging it on one of our brush trucks, which would probably be the vehicle that would go in, in a project like this. So that covers the ambulances and the police cars and anything else that, that would probably try and have to get up there. So what the fire chief and, after we had our meeting, the TRC, the fire chief and I, we did go to the site and we did take a walk around that road, completely around the perimeter. And it, in the, in its current state, it's just, it's just not wide enough in some areas. We have a little four-wheeler, we couldn't even get that, you know, just basically scraping through in some areas. So there is gonna have to be some work done on that particular road in order to get us to where we need to be. So that's really the bigger one, so that we can get, we can get emergency vehicles and people up there should we need, should we have to. The other thing we ask for is, once we get emergency vehicles up this access road, and I'm just gonna use a medical incident for instance, someone up there is working on the panels, maybe it's during the install, someone has a medical issue, whatever, you name it, it's gonna be a multi-agency response. You're gonna have police, fire, and EMS all headed up there, all in separate vehicles. And the issue is, once they get up there, how do we turn around and get them out? Let's say the ambulance is in the middle and they're the one transporting the patient, obviously, we have to have a way to get vehicles to turn around and get them out of there. So one of the things we're asking for is to turn around at the end there. And Mr. Hunter, I did see the plan that you sent me late this afternoon, that they've tried to incorporate that already. So again, these comments are being worked on and we really appreciate that. The turnout was the other big one. Fencing, any of the fencing, we ask for gates that are at least twelve feet wide so we can get our apparatus in and out. And as always, we'll accommodate those with a Carver fire lock, which means we'll have access to get in should we have to. And one of the biggest ones, you know, we wrote it in the interest of planning for the future, especially in that North Carver corridor where it's expected to grow commercially, you know, in the future, we have no idea, you know, what it will look like ten or fifteen, twenty years from now. We just feel that the back of the fire station, as currently drawn, and it looks like it's a little more than that, no, no, it's not actually, the panel's measured about seventy-five feet off the back of the fire station. And we really feel like that doesn't leave us room for any expansion in the future should we have to. You know, should we have to expand the building itself, maybe the septic system has to move, we just didn't feel it was prudent to back ourselves in a corner and have solar panels seventy-five feet off the back of the fire station. So we were asking for some relief there. And I think that originally, we had asked that these, this whole array be moved to another area on the site, and I, and I think that was putting a little bit of difficulty in the equation for everybody involved. So I think the fire chief, Mr. Hunter and myself met and we agreed upon a hundred and fifty feet would be agreeable to us if we could have a hundred and fifty feet off the back of the fire station, just to accommodate the future for whatever the future holds. We don't know what that would be, but we're just looking for a hundred and fifty feet. You know, and I, and I don't know if these panels could move a little bit to accommodate that or how that would work, but, but that's, that's where we're at. In compromise, we're just trying to compromise and try to get the project done. So those were really the biggies for us. You talked about signage a little bit. Again, we're not asking for anything that's not required by code, by NEC or local estate codes and things like that. The one thing that I think the board health agent talked about is, we talk about a ground fuels manicuring program for solar sites, so that as the site ages and the ground fuels start to grow up, even with the, you know, with the weed webbing and stuff like that, you still get the vegetation. I think he, he talked a little bit about, he has a, does he not have a, they have a mowing plan there at the current time or something like that?
They, Joe, do you know?
Twice a year.
Yeah.
Twice a year.
We just happen to have Joe here, he's not here for this.
Educated guest.
So something like that. I think, my, my impression was it was supposed to continue?
At least once.
Yeah, I guess my impression of, of the plan was that's supposed to continue into the future?
I think it has to.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it did. And so those are the things that we would look for, just to make sure that the vegetation isn't six feet high and, you know, you have a, that's where we get our brush fires in that dry, grassy, windy area like that.
It's a manicuring program, that's what you call it.
We call it a, we call it a man, a ground fuels manicuring.
Right. And we've required that on all the solar projects.
So I think four to date, right?
I think this is our fifth one, yeah.
This is our fifth. So this is any, anything, is not anything different than we've asked for on any of the other solar. The Ravenbrook, you know, and we looked at Ravenbrook the same day and if I'm not mistaken, that was you guys as well? That is picture perfect as to what, Ravenbrook was picture perfect when we, when we went up there. For the access roads, for the turnarounds, for everything that we asked for, picture perfect.
Manicuring.
Perfect. I mean, the roads are a little grown, but you could expect that, but in the arrays themselves, perfect. So if there is a model to go by, you know, that's the one I would choose. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ray.
It's always good to have you here.
Thanks for having me.
Is there anyone from any other department that...
No one else is here other than, if you wanted Sean or the board to comment, yep.
Yeah, before I open it up to the public, I don't know, Sean, did you have any comments to make?
Yeah, we, there are a couple of follow-up comments and glad the chief was here actually because, you know, the access was one issue that was, he wasn't able to attend the entire TRC meeting, so there was some more discussion that went on afterwards, so he's, he's covered that really well. The other was clarifying the detail, the stone detail around and under the, the array itself, and that's something that I was looking for clarification and a chance to digest it after we received that information. The other thing that was brought up tonight is the screening. I read the, the response letter very quickly. There's a discussion about the inverters probably staying where they are and providing some landscaping to help screen that, so maybe we'll have to think about some perspectives and types of plant materials that would provide a good screen and buffer from North Main Street, just to make sure that the views in both directions are preserved. There's been a lot of effort from this board in particular about any development in the, in the area, the focus on landscaping and mitigating those impacts, so just something to consider.
Thank you, Sean.
And then, Jack, post-closure was one of the big things that Tank brought up at the TRC as well.
Yes, that, that we gotta make sure, and they know this, that they, that they work with Joe's, Joe, you don't handle this in your office.
I don't, but I think you met with Mark.
Yeah. So that they communicate, so that, and this has always been an issue in, in the town, that that closure of that landfill hasn't occurred, and this is an opportunity to get that done. At no cost.
What needs to be done for final closure?
I don't know.
Do we know?
Do you know?
We'll have to discuss that. I, I've looked at it, I, I've looked at DEP consent agreement that the town is under. There are some plans and things that have to be filed. Landfill's closed for all intensive purposes from an engineering point of view. The documentation needs to be submitted. I think we have an opportunity with the post-closure use permit process to kind of do everything as seamlessly as possible. I think DEP will be inclined to move forward, their policy is to support these types of projects, as you know, Mr. Chairman. So we're hopeful that we can, you know, get it all done in a, in a pretty expeditious, expeditious manner.
That's great. We'll be doing two things at once here.
At no cost to the town.
Anybody on the board have any questions before this goes to public comment? All right, now we'll open this up to, to the public. If anybody would like to make any comments, have any questions, if you could just come up, use the microphone.
Yeah, you're gonna need the mic.
And give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, board. Good evening, gentlemen. Michael Jones, I'm Director Butter, Seven Lakingham Drive. Thanks for hearing me tonight. Came downtown hall a couple of weeks ago when they first announced the hearing, checked in the town clerk, the application for the permit, kept reference, specifically states application for arrays on top of the landfill. Then I see the, down low here, and tonight, it's been referenced, on top of the landfill is up on top. So I got a concern, that kind of blind side of me. This is my house right here. Back in its infancy, when I contacted the planning department, it was mentioned that Director Butter's would have some screening. I'm not seeing any screening mentioned tonight. As far as the closure, I'm not sure. I'm familiar with waste management and working at landfills and so forth. Right here in the east corner, there is soil creep or called slip. We got a static vents that are over about thirty degrees. And that comes down on top of the service road, as Deputy mentioned. It's probably not, I'm not sure if it's violating, the cap is integrity has been broken, but it's something we have to look at before we widen the road. Looking around, I'm all for solar, but you know, I look out, I can't see the top of the landfill from my kitchen windows and bedroom windows, especially now the gypsy moss have cleared out all the foliage. Is there a contingency fund or a bond up? Fast forward fifteen, twenty years down the road, the taxpayers don't get stuck with something if something should happen.
We will require what we call a decommissioning bond, which we've done for the other five projects, and if unfortunate event, they abandon the project, we pull the bond and we dismantle it.
That's good to know, thank you. And my last concern would be southwest winds, prevailing winds, any dust generated comes right on the Lakingham Drive. There will be a requirement for water trucks. That's a DEP requirement, dust mitigation on any construction site, but...
Usually it's performance-based. The problem is having to build in that requirement to have dust control or a water truck available and present on site at all times, that's not always done, so that can be considered.
I know where they can get the water.
Oh, yeah. Can get to it, right?
And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any dust problems when constructed the Ravenbrook landfill?
We didn't. We used a processed asphalt that came up the roadway from Plymouth Street up to the top of the, top of the landfill. It gets compacted, it's pretty tight material. The landfill is covered with a geotech fabric before any activity happens on top of it. Rock is then dumped on top of it. I suppose that may generate a little bit of dust. It's unlikely, we haven't had an issue with dust in any one of our other projects, but we could certainly look at some things to, to make things work out. Just one comment, the only spot, when it says top of the landfill, the entire lower half of that kind of triangle is landfill, right down to where the vegetation line is, there is, that is all cap landfill. So the part north of that, that is, I don't believe is cap landfill, it extends a little bit past or a little bit up to that gravel road that's there now. But we have found, as we've done projects, that trash is always found in places that we never expected it to be because oftentimes, you know, the maps and things of that sort from the fifties and sixties and seventies weren't very accurate with their depiction. I don't know if the town has owned this landfill itself the whole time or whether it was a private owner, but leading us to say, I think the, the limits of the cap are at least identified some point in time. So we could certainly try to work with you on the dust issues and try to, you know, get that satisfied. The other point that I just wanna add, the, the profile of our racking system, so you're on the north side, so you'll be looking at the back of it, the profile, the back edge is, how high am I?
Forty-one inches, forty-two.
Forty-two inches high, so it's not gonna be off the ground a great, you know, like these, you know, the long, you know, the high angle, it's gonna be a five-degree angle pitch. So they're relatively low profile to the ground, we get them to as close to the ground as we can get them. So if that's helpful at all.
It is. Our elevation is almost equal to the top of the landfill from Lakingham and regards to the dust. That's just based on experience, the occasional dirt bikes get in there.
Sure.
Tearing up that dirt road in the dust.
How do they get in there?
You know, they go over and ask them, hey, could you do this somewhere else or something? It's neighborhood kids, but it doesn't generate any dust, it blows right down on the houses.
All right, anybody else have any comments to make?
I do, I just a quick, I don't...
If you could, if you could just stand up and, and use the microphone, please, and give us your name and address. Unfortunately, we have to be, we have to do this so that people on TV can hear.
Jean Winslow on Heather's Path. This isn't about the Montello?
That's next.
Oh, okay, I'm just checking on that. We're sitting there like all confused, so then my next question will be after that. Sorry, we came in late.
I did.
Well, that was good practice.
These things take time.
Anyone else like to make any comments?
Just for you to take home or whatever, I do have the letters that we had at the TRC. I think the chief and Sean and actually Greg went through them all. There's not a lot here other than accommodating the fire department and, you know, and I think, you know, it's a little give and take we'll have here and I think both sides have, you know, it's a town project, we're gonna generate money out of this and we gotta provide for public safety and make sure the normal stuff is taken care of, but there's not a lot here. I'm gonna suggest, would you like to have a site visit on this?
Yes.
Well, that can't quit. I'd like to invite the chief to come to that, too. I'm looking at Chad, cause he's, are you away, Jim?
I'll be back next week.
I dragged Jim here today. I, I almost went to his house and got him.
Can we do it before Thursday?
I, how about Monday, Monday?
What time?
Five?
The later the better for me. The later in the day the better.
I have a seven with Will.
Yeah, let me do a six. He can buy dinner.
How did that come around? Maybe the chief will buy dinner.
He's old enough.
Six then?
Six would be fine.
On Monday, the twenty-ninth? Is that good?
We'll need somebody to build it up.
That's fine, as long as Greg or Jeff are here and Mike, Mike's running the show, we know that. So I need a motion to that. I'd like to schedule the site visit for the twenty-ninth at six.
Have a motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then to continue it, is two weeks enough to wrap it up, hopefully, if we can get stuff addressed? So then, yeah, we're looking at the fourteenth, you got quite a bit on your agenda, but I'm gonna suggest seven-thirty. I'd like to schedule the, continue the public hearing until July fourteenth at seven-thirty.
Second.
Motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome to the site visit.
Well, I'll take some of that.
You can wave at us. Yes, I know there are, I've been up there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, do you want, I mean Bruce, do you wanna set up?
All right. Wait, wait a minute.
Can we take like two minutes?
So two-minute break maybe?
He's gotta set up, he wants to do a little presentation.
Can I grab some more?
Yeah, okay. So they have public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. See, this was scheduled at...
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five this evening in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, on the application of Route forty-four Development LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to sections forty-three hundred and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw located on three-dash-four Park Avenue in Carver, Mass. to conduct initial site preparation activities. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair, published dates, May twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, and May twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen. So this particular piece of property covers Carver and Plimpton, so we have both...
And Middleborough.
And Middleborough.
A little tiny bit.
So we have people here tonight from Carver and maybe Middleborough and Plimpton. All right, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's George McLaughlin and I'm here with my partner, Bob Delphone. My name's George McLaughlin and I'm here with my partner, Bob Delholm. And we're also here with one of our engineers, Bruce Haskell. Bob and I are the owners of Route forty-four Development LLC, which is the owner of this property. And it's funny, I was just kind of sitting here daydreaming a little bit and I was thinking the first time I came to Carver was I think for my eighth birthday, going to Eatonville Railroad. So that was, that was a few years ago. And then I started, more recently, I started spending more time in this area because I have, I wrote a law firm in Boston and I've tried a lot of eminent domain cases and I tried a ton of cases.
If you could use the microphone, please.
Sure. I've tried a lot of cases, I tried a lot of cases representing property owners, a lot of them cranberry growers in connection with the Route forty-four, the new Route forty-four coming through. As a matter of fact, I see Jimmy and Alice Cole out there and I represented them and their, and their parents in their eminent domain case. And over the years, I've also invested heavily in real estate, as has Bob. I've probably owned, developed and managed about, and sold about two million square feet of real estate over the years. Bob has extensive experience in real estate development. He's probably owned and managed and developed about six hundred million in, in real estate. So Bob and I have been friends for a long time and have invested together and, and we were both drawn to this area because we saw the great promise of Route forty-four. And particularly this parcel at the intersection of Route fifty-eight and forty-four, we thought had tremendous purchase, tremendous potential. So we purchased it in October of two thousand and thirteen and we've spent the last year and a half or so having a team of engineers go over the property and to get a handle on what we felt was the highest and best use of the property for future development. And we, you know, when we were doing our due diligence, we came across the study that FXM did for the, for the town back in two thousand and eight. And we really concur in that study. We, that study concluded that this was really a A-key, if not D-key, commercial development parcel in Carver. And we felt the same way. So after we had our engineers study the site for a while, we, we both felt, as did our real estate consultant, Cushman and Wakefield in Boston, felt that this was really a site that would be a perfect site for a regional warehouse distribution center or centers, similar to what Cisco Corporation did one exit away. And yet, in order to capitalize in that market, our experts, Cushman and Wakefield, our broker tells us, there's really a, a kind of a trend toward large reasonable, regional distribution centers, anywhere from three hundred thousand square feet up. So in order to capitalize on that, we really have to make this site pad ready so that, you know, as we're going through straightening out the debris problems and making the site pad ready, hopefully along that permitting route, we run into, you know, a viable tenant for the site. So that's the reason we're here tonight. We've, we've been studying the site for a year and a half. Now it's time to get into the dirt and start making our vision of this site. You know, as I say, the vision is probably for a million, a million, two hundred thousand square feet of distribution warehouse type facilities. To make that vision a reality and in connection with that, we're going to need a special permit from you folks to bring in materials that we can use to start to reclaim the site and make it, make it pad ready, to start to fix the roads, to start to clean up the debris and so on. So at that point, I think would be best served by me turning it over to Mr. Haskell and Mr. Delholm so that they can explain some of the technical aspects of this to you. Bruce?
Good evening, my name is Bruce Haskell with Langley Environmental. I'm the engineer working with Route forty-four Development on trying to do this initial task. And I just want to, we're going to go through a little detail about what the tasks are, what we're looking to do and get permitted by the planning board. But the really, the goal here is to really advance and to deal with some of the historic problems on the site, advance the site forward towards that end and to do it over a period of time. So when that tenant comes to the door and is available, we're much more ready. And I think one of the stories we'll tell is when you go out there and look at it, you just can't imagine any of these uses could actually take place on this site. So that's what we're trying to do here. Our end vision, and we've got some boards of this, we've done some schematics of the site, is a large distribution center, as George mentioned, with a new access road from Route fifty-eight and some of the details being worked, tie into the North Carver water system. And again, I just want to emphasize, all the activities here, it's a start to process of implementing the envisioned long-term development of the project out there. Clean up the problems, get the site into some kind of marketable condition. The things we're looking to do on the site ultimately, and some of these are part of the current application, some of them will be part of a future application to you, is there's piles of debris throughout the site and you can probably see this better on your handout, but that's just a snapshot of a typical location out there with just piles of miscellaneous materials laid around the site. We're looking to clean those up, remove them from the site by and large. Most of these materials will not be reused on site and just get that, those issues addressed. There's significant grade changes and drainage issues. There were millions of cubic yards of material moved from this site. It's mapped by the wetlands, we've done some of the wetlands work out there, being very, very close to the bottom of the groundwater table. We need to bring the elevation up to do, to address those grade changes throughout the site. It's very uneven, as you'll see, and some of the drainage issues that are out there, some low-lying areas right in the middle of the site where it was over excavated. There is a stump dump on the site, a few acre stump dump, and a large, several acre wood waste pile on the site, which are remnants of prior operations permitted by the town in, in both cases, that were left by the prior operators that need to be addressed. Both of those require some action by the Mass DEP through their solid waste process. We've had some discussions with them. There are virtually no utilities on site, inadequate maybe too nice of a word, out there, and we need to upgrade those. And then we need to close out the, we call it, release tracking numbers under the Mass contingency plan. Those are releases that historically happened at the site and have to be closed out under Mass DEP's process. This is a schematic of the site and, you know, the Route forty-four runs sort of left to right across the bottom of the site out there and just to orient everybody there. So the yellow areas, I apologize, it's sort of partially blocked, there's the existing building in the bottom of the site, the southern part of the site, and there's a large area buried logs and stumps that runs sort of along the southeast corner of the site. There's the existing stump dump out there. Those both are not part of this application because we need to address those and have permits from DEP before we come back or concurrent with coming back to you to address those, but that's in the plans, we'll talk about the schedule for that. And then we did a geotechnical program, some of the engineers have looked at the site and they identified to the left an area of significant, you know, five to ten feet of buried peat material out there. Now, we do not know, because we cannot tell from aerial photos whether that's a historic pond or it's something that was bought onto the site and is subsequently covered. But obviously, that's in the middle of our develop, proposed development footprint. So dealing with that and getting that area either excavated, it certainly has to be excavated, or compressed to put buildings or parking areas on top of it because it will, it has no structural value at all. The area in the purple is the area we're sort of here to talk to you about tonight, to the limits of the proposed activity and operations along with the peat area, where we're going to look at doing some of the activities I'll talk about in a second. Our initial phase consists of five items there. One of the things we really need to do is upgrade the existing access road, the Park Avenue access road. It's barely passable for a, for a truck or a car, you know, a pickup truck or a car out there. So we want to upgrade that access road and put it into use to support the rest of the activities we're looking to do out here. We've got to construct some initial stormwater and erosion controls, that's a requirement for any project this size. We've took some preliminary designs in there, in the, in the, in the application. We've got to clean up the existing debris piles and it's a miscellaneous, we've done an inventory of them, we have some ideas of what has to happen to them. Ultimately, most of them will be removed from the site out there. We need to import soils to create a plateau or surcharge the peat area. So we're doing, proposing one or the other, and I'll talk a lot, in a little more detail about that, of bringing some soils into the site to sort of bring the wa, bring the site out of the groundwater table, bring it up to an elevation that's actually developable and fairly even across the site. And then we need to import ABC materials. ABC is asphalt, brick and concrete materials for onsite processing, mobile processing, temporary, to build the roadway and building subgrades that are going to be required out there. We need a large amount, you know, these buildings that are hundreds of thousands of square feet require parking support, requires a large amount of gravel material underneath it, and we're trying to start to generate those materials because we also have piles of that, same kind of materials all around the site that were left from prior previous operations. We want to use that imported ABC material to construct Park, reconstruct Park Avenue. We are limiting the cleanup of debris piles at this point outside the wetland buffer zones. We have finished the field of work on the delineation. We will submit a INRAD abbreviated notice to the, I forget what that acronym means, but to the Conservation Commission to delineate the wetland buffer zones and we'll stay out of those for this initial application, we'll modify the plans accordingly. And then we need to install the erosion sedimentation controls. As I mentioned, we, we've looked at two alternatives to, to deal with the, to bring soil into this part of this initial application into the site to prepare it for its ultimate use. We've looked at up to sixty thousand cubic yards of grading material in that purple area in the middle of the site. And that's an area between sort of two higher areas, just to flatten that out and get some kind of positive grade in there. Or, and it's an either or, it's eighty-two thousand cubic yards, to basically develop a pile on top of this peat area, monitor how much it settles and determine if the peat area needs to be removed or taken out of there. Just to give you a quick idea of the volumes, and again, we have not set the, how much material ultimately will be used on the site or needed on the site because we don't know what the final end use is. The site's a hundred and twenty-seven acres. Raising the site one foot is about two hundred thousand cubic yards of material. So that, that, just to give you an idea, it's such a large site out there, that just that small amount is about that amount of material. Again, there's a lot of work we have to do to try to, try to address those areas once we have some conversations with DEP. We're going to have, there's strict testing and monitoring protocols that the town consultants have looked at and, and reviewed for this kind of site, what's appropriate material, how it's addressed, what can be bought in, what can't be bought in. And then we are in the process of discussions with Mass DEP, and I can answer questions about this, but there's an interim draft policy that DEP has issued after we submitted our application at the end of May regarding filling in of old sand and gravel pits and quarries and materials there. So we're in the process of having discussions with them to make sure we comply with the policies of the requirements of that policy concurrent with working with you. And one of the requirements is we get all local approvals. The onsite asphalt, brick and concrete processing that we're looking to do, we're looking essentially to bring in clean, uncoated, it's called ABC materials from off-site construction projects as well as the material that's already on site, either finished materials for roadways and building subgrades. We can port either pre-processed, unprocessed material or finished materials for those uses. And we need a, a pretty good volume to give some idea of the application of the volume that we might need. We will stockpile the unprocessed material until there's a sufficient quantity to utilize a mobile crushing plant. I want to be clear, this is not a permanent, you know, crushing plant of any sort, this is just merely to have the material there that we can deal with and there. And all the ABC material is going to be used onsite. It's not going to become an operation where we're selling the material to others located offsite.
I do have a question. Where would you locate that mobile crushing plant on the site?
It's within the purple, it's the northern part of the purple area. I'll, I'll show you, the, the plan is the next one, I can show you a little bit more detail there. As I mentioned before, we have a, a second phase of site preparation, once we've got the wetlands approval, once we've dealt with some of the DEP issues out there, based on the stump dump. Remediate the existing stump dump, our intent is to take care of that, process it, remove it from the site. Clean up the large wood waste pile, this is a sort of at the end of the wood waste pile in the picture there, grind it up, use the material even to stabilize slopes onsite or remove it offsite, if that's appropriate. Clean up all the debris piles that were within those wetland buffer zones, continue the accepting the soils, material, you know, according to a final grading plan for site preparation and the ABC materials and really begin utility, I should say roadway installation access into the site down there. We intend on, you know, starting to start this operation during, you know, the summertime, hopefully pending approvals, and then submit the final special permit, or revised special permit application or a new special permit application to the board in late, later on in this year. So to answer your first question, the, the processing would sort of be where the camera is and to the left of that, to the west of that area there, that's sort of the area that we've looked after the ABC processing in that area. So with that, I can try to answer any questions or comments that you may have. Oh yeah. Yeah, please, Route forty-four is just off this, this map out there, it just basically runs where the white is there, roughly.
How many trucks a day are you talking, bringing in there?
You know, it's, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. We, we think that depending, well, depends on the duration, depends on the availability of materials out there. You know, anywhere between, I don't know, Bobby, if you have a sense of it's... Yeah, thirty and fifty trucks a day, I would say, to do that for the, I mean, we've, six month duration and, and, yeah, that would be a sort of peak. We'll fluctuate a little bit with availability of materials.
Jack, before we open up to the board, did you have any comments?
Well, just, you know, I, I've gotten a lot of phone calls probably from everyone here about this. I've heard a lot of rumors that are wrong, some that may be right, I don't know. It's not a forty B project, it's not a hazardous waste site. But, you know, I, I think, we had a TRC, I wish the chief was here, and I think our role as the town at this stage, at this stage, and there's going to be a series of public hearings, this is just a one of, I can't imagine how many down the road, of public hearings every step of the way. But our role right now, I think, as a town, is to make sure that what they bring in is clean, what they bring in is exactly what they need and no more, and that our infrastructure, which at this point is only the roadway, can handle what they're doing. And then we protect the neighbors. We hired, well, we always have Sean, he's our engineer, Sean Martin, and we specifically hired a licensed sites professional, Joe Salvetti, because that's what we want. And Joe works with the Board of Health. So we did the TRC, we did our comments which are in your packet, but at some point, I don't know when you want to do it, but certainly before the public, I think it's important to have Sean and Joe explain their take on it. After the TRC meeting, we met internally with Joe and Sean, and then we met with the applicant, with Joe and Sean to, to grasp and understanding on both sides about what this is and to meet those high goals. And so, that's all.
Even before I open up to the board, maybe Sean and Joe would like to make some comments?
I think I'd go first, only because my, my comments focus on kind of the planning aspects of this project. And I think what we asked Bruce to do, and I think he did pretty well, is to try and present what the overall intent for this property is at the, at the final stages. They don't know exactly what's going to happen on the property, but to give you some sense of the intent and that this is what I would term, even though it's on a fairly large magnitude, is basically a small piece of that development plan. You have to try and keep that in perspective, the scale of the site, the scale of the future development option that they've shown in their presentation. So my comments are really focused on trying to look at the environmental controls as they relate to zoning and this type of project, noise, dust control, erosion control, stormwater management, all those things. We've asked for some more feedback and some information on the stormwater management, some, a little bit more on the dust control and, and those sorts of things. At the end of the day, I don't think those are the, those are the big picture items that the board should probably focus on. These are technical items that need to be addressed and I think they will be addressed, but kind of thinking about how this whole development will take place, you know, doing some quick numbers. Get a lot of truck trips every day. How are those, how are those going to be addressed? The roadway improvements and, and things like that. You know, how are those, how are those gonna be addressed, um, the roadway improvements and, and things like that, um, making sure that the dust doesn't make its way onto public roads and things of that nature, so. If you look through my, my comments, that's where I focused on, um, on them, but again, um, I think we'll work, be able to work through those pretty easily. I think you'll hear a lot more influence from the public and then obviously from yourselves, so that's what I ask you to look at.
Now, we know Sean, but, uh, Joe, if you could introduce yourself, uh, so people on TV could know who you are.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Joe Salvetti, I'm a licensed site professional. What that means is I get to oversee cleanup of, um, hazardous waste sites, releases of oil and hazardous material. I currently work for Face, Boffett and Thorne Dyke, but I've been pleased to have worked within the town of Carver probably for about the past fifteen years off and on with a prior firm. So we were involved with the cap and enclosure of the North Carver landfill, we're involved with some of the grant assistance that Jack received, um, to hire an independent company and go out and do some, uh, quantitative analytical testing of soil piles, monitoring wells, um, so fairly familiar with the property over the years. Um, so, one of my roles was to come in and look at how clean's the material coming on site, what are the controls in place to ensure that we keep the quality of the groundwater, uh, as good as it is, and to make sure that we know what's being brought on site, where the soil's coming from, how much is coming from where. And, um, what Bruce alluded to is a new policy that DEP, um, has put out for public comment right now. And the components of that policy are exactly what I would wanna see for, uh, company bringing material onto the property. Um, there's rigorous testing that has to be, uh, conducted. It cannot come from any dirty site. Um, a gas station site, uh, heating oil spill, uh, municipal or in, excuse me, an industrial or commercial property where there's been uses of hazardous material. Um, that type of material can't come on. The testing that will be done will essentially look to see if the soil, um, is below, absolutely below, any type of regulatory reporting criteria. Um, so, the, there's a very small window of soil that can come in. Um, natural soils would be great. So if you were, um, doing a new commercial facility and you're gonna generate a couple hundred thousand yards of natural material from a property, that's the type of soil that could come into the property. That still would have to meet analytical criteria. Um, fill material can come onto the property. Is clean fill material, if it meets the criteria, that can come on as well. Um, a lot of our discussion was on who's watching the material come in. Um, there's a couple third-party party, there's a couple third parties that would be involved. So for instance, if I was building a project in Fairhaven and I wanted to bring in some soil, I as an independent LSP, totally independent of these folks, would make a submittal to them that says, I've got a couple hundred thousand yards of soil, I've done all the analytical testing criteria. And the analytical test- testing criteria is exhaustive. It's not one or two tests, it's a, it's a suite of parameters, um, that looks at everything you can imagine. Um, they would, I would have to provide a history of the site, show that it wasn't dirty, um, and then it would go to these folks' review. We've asked that the town be copied on those submittals as well, assuming everything passes muster. We then look at a schedule for how it's brought into the property. We've looked at working hours, um, we've talked a little bit about, um, how much can come in. Uh, it is true, to, to, that was a good example Bruce made, on a property such as this, to ready the roads is a fairly low, like, I think it was a hundred thousand or hundred thousand yards of material. So, that's where we also looked at the crushing of the asphalt, brick and concrete. I like the word mobile, I like the word that it wasn't building a plant. Building imparts some permanence. Um, I liked that, that com- component. And there's still some approvals that need to be obtained from DEP relative to how that mobile processing would occur as well. Um, and it's a, it's a, it's a recycling, it's a reuse. You, you crush up asphalt, concrete, brick, and you could put all that under roads and parking areas. So, the plans I've seen make this look like it's a, it's getting and readying this particular site for a developer to come in and build one of these large distribution facilities. Um, if you guys have been out there, to go out there right now with a real estate team and say, gee whiz, I wanna build a new Cisco, you know, there's a heck of a lot of work that needs to be done. So as we look at this, um, special permit in the purple area, we are looking to see that what's being proposed is appropriate for that specific type of development, that it's not more than is needed, that the reuse of the ABC, the importation of the soil, um, does not preclude anything. In other words, let's not see a big hill of material left somewhere and then boom, that precludes the ability to come back in and, and show it as a potential development. So, um, that's kinda where, what, what I see my role is, is, is to be involved from that perspective. And, um, the policies and approvals from DEP kinda confirm that it is only a narrow window of material that can be brought in that would fill or that would fit the criteria and the requirements to do this type of filling operation to prep for development. That's probably my summary, folks.
Thank you, Joe.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Will.
Anybody, uh, on the board have any, uh, comments at this time? Will?
Yeah, you have? Before we go off to the board.
Just a bunch of questions, um, and concerns on initial, um, look at this. Um, the amount of trucks per day, um, is a concern of, of the truck traffic on that road and also getting into the site, going past the Abishan, um, and also the, uh, real, real concern of, um, the hours of operation. What do you think the hours of operation's gonna be, actual construction?
Um, in the application, we said we receive materials today for, that will generally be the hours of operation. Um, there may be some work done if, you know, rainstorms like this come by, you know, some work on site done to clean things up after four, but I think we said, I believe we said seven o'clock was the, the cutoff for any kind of work.
Seven at night?
Seven at night, yes.
Is that heavy equipment operation?
It would be, the equipment would be, would be materials around, but it would, it would be, would it go that to seven o'clock every single night?
Monday through Friday, or you guys propose on weekends?
Generally Monday through Friday, yes.
Okay. Okay, um, operation of the large, uh, portable grinding, is that gonna be scheduled for a one-time event? Or is it a multiple event because of the area that, in purple that you're talking about? Is, in other words, are you gonna get in a lot of, lot of, uh, processed, stockpile it and then get the machine in? Is that your?
I think that, that's, I mean, just, you have two answers to that question? It will be a multiple time event because we keep, we don't have enough room to stockpile everything we need and then process it. So it will not just be a one-time, you know, a huge stockpile and then one time, but there is a quantity we need to have that, you know, make it worthwhile for the
Sure.
vendor to come in and do that work.
And then my next question would be, is the material heights on your stockpile, the maximum height? Uh, my concern is, um, obviously because of, uh, creating mountains and also if there's an incident out there of one of your employees or one of your vendors out there working, public safety on the fire department getting out there responding of big mounds of debris, my concern is, um, collapsing, uh, people getting hurt because of, the heights are so high.
Let me, let me get, I'll get, we'll, we'll give you, I, I, I hear you and we'll get you some kind of response on, on.
That'd be great.
Well, can I just interrupt one sec? If you look in your packet, the, uh, fire department's already has a policy on height and it's twenty-six feet.
Okay. I just know that the previous, um, occupants up there, Chiptech, um, that is probably where all the stumps and the waste was. We had an incident up there with a fire and it was a two incidents, which was a very large concern.
I mean, not, the, the one difference here, none of the materials we're talking about except for some small amounts of wood debris around are combustible materials.
Which is encouraging.
That's a big difference between what was going on.
On the stockpiles, or when you bring in the machine to grind it, um, and I don't need the answers to these now, it's just something that we can work on through the process, is the time of your processing, in other words, the grinding of it all, and dispersment over the property. Do you have a timeframe where you're gonna re-stockpile that and then disperse?
I mean, I would say most of the material will be re-stockpiled and then dispersed, I mean.
Well, initially, the, uh, the initial materials would go towards, uh, rebuilding the access road.
Yep.
Subsequent to that, it would probably, uh, the next, uh, phase would be creating a more stable work base, and then beyond that, there would be some stockpiling.
Okay. On after processing, after grinding?
After processed.
And I'm probably not using the proper words, but.
That's right.
Um, that's good, and, and timeframes will be, I guess the hours of operation of that grinding and stuff is a concern because of noise levels and, uh, to the neighbors. Um, I'm gonna ask, um, when you're testing, um, the materials coming into the town, is the testing gonna be done on site or is it prior to coming to town?
Uh, it's done, it's done prior to, and then there's confirmation testing that's done as well.
Okay. And, um, if, if in turn we have a, uh, a bad shipment, a lack of a better expression, and it's caught, obviously, where would that transpire? Is that with you, Joe, or is that with them? I don't know, you, you know?
Yeah, that's a good question, Will, 'cause, um, and even to speak to your earlier question, yes, these guys will, sorry, these guys will get a complete submittal from another entity.
Yep.
And in that submittal, it will have to describe the history of the property, all the testing that was done, why they feel that this is suitable for importation as a, we'll call it a similar soil. There's all these new semantics on, on soils these days. But essentially, that gets looked at and approved before anything gets brought on. There will be folks at the facility handling materials, checking loads, um, after that, that, that packet of information has been looked at and reviewed. We've asked for copies of that to also be sent to us so that we can review it. So if, again, if it's a gorgeous new clean facility in Fairhaven and they've gotta get rid of a bunch of soil and they wanna get rid of it close and local, that should be, wow, that's a great spot. Now, if all of a sudden we're looking at the, uh, redevelopment of a casino in Everett and there's a whole bunch of soil coming in, we might ask a lot more questions, and I think these, and, and that's not gonna be acceptable if it fails criteria.
But as long as it meets criteria, there's an A and B checkpoint, one off and one on.
Correct. And, and Bob, I think, or Bruce, maybe you guys could speak to what you were thinking about for your controls on site, because they did reference some spot checks and there'd be a laydown area if, you know, all of a sudden this beautiful sand and gravel coming in and some, uh, somebody sneaks into the trucking line and boom, dumps off a load of black soil that smells like gas, you know, maybe you could speak to that for a minute, guys.
Certainly, I'll, Bruce, I'll turn it over to you. It, the, the board should really understand that, uh, the, the materials that we're proposing to be, bring in are really inert raw materials so that we can manufacture our own construction materials on site. Uh, we have the space to do it. It's gonna be a very expensive investment to put the right infrastructure in place. And so really what we're talking about doing is importing the raw materials to allow us to construct the site and make it pad-ready. Uh, the type of materials that we've requested approval for are really, it's a very narrow band, and it's not unlike or any different than any of the other sites that you currently have, uh, construction taking place. The difference here really is, is the scale. And you should also bear in mind that this really, and there will be, um, multiple opportunities for, uh, the town, uh, to comment and permit and as well as the community. Uh, and this really will be the, uh, smallest or, uh, the least impactful stage of redeveloping this property. Um, so it's just an initial step in that direction, and I just wanna just, uh, provide that as context.
I, I, I think to try to give you an idea of some of the, the controls, there's a lot, I mean, there's been a lot of soil managed over the years and a lot of checks there. So once that package comes in and is approved, town gets a copy of it, um, everybody agrees that's, that's good material, it will not be the, the material from the casino in Everett by any stretch. Um, and it's, uh, you know, it's agreed to, it comes into the site, there's tracking documents that come with the material, the truck drivers bring in, it's checked, it's signed, it comes from that same, that same location. Um, you know, one of the most effective ways I've found, and I've, I've been involved with numerous of these sites, is it just, the soil just looks different. You know, it's a clean soil, it's coming in, it's coming in, all of a sudden the soil's got a lot of brick in it or something that you wouldn't expect, and those are the sites, the sites that, you know, really get set aside, or it has some kind of strong odor. So, you know, you're digging a large site like this, it's, the material is generally very consistent visually looking at it. Um, we've set up some pretty high standards that we're not gonna take any soils that has, has really a historic, um, you know, release of, um, organic compounds, you know, those, those kinds of things out there. Um, out, uh, in our, in the specs that we're requiring, which is similar to what DEP is going to require, um, from us. So we've given you sort of a high, um, an outline of what those requirements are gonna be. Um, but there's a lot of tracking, there's confirmatory testing that's done of the soils, um, you know, once they're on site, if there's something of question, there's random confirmatory testing, there's things just to make sure, um, that's there, and I think we've committed to, we've, I know we've committed to providing copies of all those along with regular inspections and summaries, um, to the town as we, as we move through the process.
Thank you. Um, I know that, I know in your packet and also, um, your presentation that you did here, which I think is great because everybody can see the same thing that we have. Um, you talk about the second phase is the removal of the stumps and the wood debris. Um, I know I'm looking further down the road, but the process will probably move pretty quick. When did you expect that end of it to start to be addressed on the stump, stump area and, um, on progress? I get, I guess I'm looking for a general timeframe. Timeframe is
Next year.
Always subject to twenty twenty.
I, 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 before I turn on the body, get more, but there's, there's, there's two parts for those two areas. We have to deal, we have to deal with the, the local town approvals. But because the, that is a permitted stump dump on, under Mass DEP regulations, there's a permit that we have to submit to them to get approval there. So that's sort of the process that's gonna take some time to, to get that reviewed, approved and put forward there. So that's, that's sort of part of the, the schedule, and that's part of the reasons to, to put it through the second phase.
Um, the other, the other question that I had, and that's just good for me to, I read a lot of the stuff that you guys gave me, uh, a couple weeks ago, the peat, the peat area. You're talking about a lot of process, and you had commented on storing material on it to see what the compact is. Is that in the initial phase, or is that in the phase that's second phase, third phase, to see what that conditions of that ground is?
What we propose to do is to do either bring the material in there and, and stockpile it on top of the peat to settle it, or do the grading in the purple area out there. And that's the, the two different volumes that we have, um, there, and we'll have to decide based on the type of material that's available to us and, you know, some of the, as the development project sort of moves forward, which one we would go forward, which, which of the two we would do.
Just a thought on, it's more of the easily part of the, um, of the parcel towards the Route, uh, forty-four, if I got my bearings correctly.
Forty-four runs white, the white strip would be forty-four, so it's to the, it's, it is, it's the western part of the site.
Kind of a great place to stockpile your stuff, and you get both of, best of both worlds.
Okay.
Um, and I'm, I know I'm gonna have, uh, more questions as we go forward, but, um, trucks coming in and out, a concern of keeping the roadways clean and also the tire washing. I know on a large-scale project, they have some type of way to drop that sediment and keep it on site. So that would just be something that I'd, I'd be seeing to, um, or something like that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, Sean, have you looked at the existing roadway out there?
No.
No?
No.
I was just curious if it could handle thirty to sixty TT units a day.
Well, that's, uh,
It, it needs huge amount, I'm sorry, it needs a huge, a, a lot of work to get, be able to handle, uh, two trucks a day. It, it needs huge amount, I'm sorry, it needs a huge, a, a lot of work to get, be able to handle, uh, two trucks a day. I mean, it does need a lot.
Coming right up from the main road, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
By Double Street, all the way back into the park.
Yeah, these, those are all things that we need to look at when we go out and do our site walk. Uh, not only, like you said, the, the site roadway itself, but the access to and from it.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Got my other ones.
How long the process, how long is this all gonna take, everything that you brought before us here tonight?
Just the first phase.
It's the first, I mean, we anticipate the first phase going through this, you know, this year, and then when the second phase gets approved, moving into that. So, you know, probably early next year getting the second phase approved. So, that's roughly the schedule we're looking at.
Yeah, and I was, I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman and Board, we're also, uh, we, we have a, a, a lot of permitting to do, not only through the town but through MIPA. So, uh, we're, we're not, um, going to sit back and wait. Uh, as we're getting the site pad ready, we are gonna be spending our time and our money pursuing our permits, uh, at MIPA so that we can, uh, you know, build a million, a million, two hundred thousand, uh, square feet. Because our brokers advise us that, uh, you know, when you're stocking big tenants like we're stocking them, it's kinda like tuna fishing. There's eight hours of boredom, you know, and, and then you have, uh, twenty minutes of excitement. And, and so you gotta be ready for the twenty minutes of excitement. And, uh, so, uh, you know, we're gonna be, uh, we, we've got all kinds of schedules. Whereas we're preparing this site, we're also going through the various, uh, you know, hurdles at MIPA that we have to go through to get all the permits and then eventually come back to the town and get the permits from the town to, to build out the site.
If I can add, Mr. Chair, MIPA to the residents is the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. And it's where the state looks at big scale impacts, such as the impact at the intersection of Montello and North Main. Impact maybe on the, uh, access to forty-four. Looks at large scale environmental impacts, historic impacts. I'm probably missing a few, um, but it looks at the larger impacts and will mandate, uh, a schedule of improvements, um, a- as they go along. There'll also be public hearings involved with that. There'll be public hearings on each phase of this, both with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. Um, there may be other, um, public hearings with the Board of Selectmen we've talked about, so. And then, if you ever get a developer, there'll be a series of public hearings with whomever that is for the multitude of people.
This is the first step of many. Yeah, they're laughing. All right, if that's, uh, everything that, uh, the board has, we'll, uh, I'll open this up to the public. If you, anybody that would like to come up, if you could speak into the microphone and give your name and address, please. And I know that we have people here from different towns, so that's important.
Hi, I'm Melissa Singletary. I live on Heather's Path in Plimpton. Um, we do own property in Carver. It's, um, our backyard is actually in Carver. Um, thank you for letting me speak. Um, my main concern is our access road. Uh, that park ave road where, what, you're saying thirty to fifty trucks a day. That road from, once you get to Abishon, you continue down Montello, it's purely residential. There's no trucks that go through there at all. Um, and, and the roads are in horrendous shape. They have been since, you know, for I'm sure a very long time. Um, the problem is, is that because it's so residential in Heather's Path, which is directly off of Montello Street, it's a completely residential area. So there's a lot of kids around, you know, I have kids. We, and I know many of the other people here have kids that are, you know, are riding their bikes, they're walking. Um, you know, they're doing things in a neighborhood and having thirty to fifty trucks going straight down the middle of that, that, that's a really big concern to me. I think that's a safety issue, it's a noise issue. Um, I just, I really, I, I really think that needs to be looked at.
We will look at that when we do our site walk.
Thank you.
Anybody else, please?
Thank you. Uh, Gene Winslow, Heather's Path. Um, could you just show me on this map because I'm a little bit upside down here? If you're saying the white strip is forty-four. Could, could you show me exactly where Montello is? Because for some reason it just seems, I don't know if you guys all feel the same, that it looks a little bit off since.
It's not on there.
No, I understand that, but he says it, it's down below. So in relation to Montello Street, because, uh, the buildings here, first of all, I don't, what building is this supposed to be? Because there are no buildings out there. There's a small trailer.
There's a garage, there's a garage building, preinterior metal building out there.
Yeah, that's the old Chit Tech.
Next out back where the old Chit Tech building is. So is that supposed to be? I mean, I'm just a little bit, like I said, so in relation to this, where?
Montello would be to your right, to the east. It's, it's basically it's the north.
Way off. It'd be off.
It'd be by the door.
It'd be by the door, maybe even farther than that.
Okay. So it's a little bit hard for us to get an idea, and I don't know if you guys all feel the same, that, that it's a little bit.
Do you have a locust map somewhere?
Forty-four is here and Montello would be more at the top.
No, 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 no. Montello would be on the far right.
Right.
Yes, so the corner of the cranberry block, Montello is way off the map.
It, it wraps around.
Right, so it's, it's hard to see the impact. I mean, do you by any chance have, have, um, a mileage marker as to how far away it is from Heather's Path?
That's a very good question. If you could tell them
We can put, we can put a.
From the purple area, what's the distance to Heather's Path?
This plan is actually in the, in the package there, but, but, uh, you've got the access road.
So there's Shaw's. So that's the old Shaw's.
Yeah, and the Montello coming through here. And then this is where the Abishon is here. So forty-four is actually off this plan out there.
Okay, so I'm right here.
Yeah.
So this is me, right here. So, I mean, we're the closest. So thirty to forty to fifty trucks, Monday through Friday, eight to four generally, except some nights till seven. Um, I'm just curious, have you guys ever lived near a construction site like this?
Oh, I have, yes.
You, you have? So you've heard the trucks and especially it seems like sometimes, I mean, I can attest to just when star, um, the, remember the great ghost, go kart track that was there? Forget the name of it, Supersports? It sometimes sounded like they were in our bed, uh, in, in the house. The same with the dirt bike track, things like that. So a sound travels and it's odd. You could be right next door to it and you don't hear it the same way as you do. Um, so that is a big concern, especially the Monday through Friday, eight to four, possibly till seven. So my general consensus to that is that it will run till seven, Monday through Friday, possibly Saturdays and Sundays 'cause there was no definitive answer generally. And then if it rains, there might be some more. So that's a major concern. Um, we lived with the fact that there was a sewage treatment plant there, and I understand it's not sewage treatment, but you have fill. Fill coming in, they dredge the Connecticut River, I think. Do you guys all remember when that came in? The smell was the worst. It, that was more noxious than poop. It was horrible. So, um, that, that's, that's a big concern on what your, what clean fill is. So I don't know if there's any sludge type stuff or dredging or mud, things like that.
We're not, uh, we're not proposing any dredging material to come in. It's soil.
Right. I'd like Joe to answer that. Can sludge be clean?
Um, that's a good question.
My thoughts.
In the, in the, in the permit application, they do talk about an odor.
Mm-hmm.
That they will not bring in materials with an odor. And I think it's, uh, you referenced hydrogen sulfide, I think Bruce. Um, so sludge is not a clean soil.
Okay.
Um, I think that would be something that we would probably talk to these folks and say, we talked about clean soils, similar soils. Um, um, sludge, sludge implies an industrial process. Um, so if it truly is a sludge from an industrial process, then I would think it's going to fail some of the criteria. Um, the other thing we also referenced is that this cannot preclude development or future activity. So the other component of any material being brought in that they're looking at is its geotechnical capabilities. Um, if all of a sudden we heard there was a hundred thousand ton of sludge coming in and it was gonna go into the building, so jeez, that really, we, we, that doesn't sound like a geotechnically suitable material to build a building on.
Mm.
So that again goes back to a little bit of controls on what we're hearing the project's about, that it doesn't bring in more than needed and that it fulfills the criteria as, as put forth in the permit. So, um, yeah, odor is specifically referenced in here.
Good. So we'll be all over that one. Um, and then, um, the removal of the stumps, I mean, what's, what's the plan for that? 'Cause I know that will create an odor. Rotten, rotten wood is smelly.
Actually, we dug some, a lot, fair amount of holes to find out how deep it is and whether it's just stumps out there. And I was out there and it was really no, it's so broken down, it's almost like a home product. It has a small odor, but not, not something that you would, you would smell out there. If there is, we'll have specific hearings and information provided to you about the, the stumps. But that's the next phase of the project. And that will have an odor control plan. If they do encounter something, they'll be able to plan to mitigate that and that can be.
Okay. Um, and you had mentioned earlier that part of the property is located in Plimpton? So are you going to the Plimpton Board to address any of these concerns or?
They're not, they're not doing anything in Plimpton.
Okay.
But some of the property they own is in Plimpton.
Okay.
And a little bit in Middleborough, actually. But they're not doing anything in Middleborough here.
They're not developing that. Um, so back to the, the, the truck issue and, and the noise. I mean, like I said, at seven o'clock at night, generally, they won't be there, but I'm gonna go for that. Um, that area coming in to where they put the Dunkin' Donuts, we can't even handle the traffic coming from Dunkin' Donuts. It's a death trap. As a matter of fact, it was ironic, I leave at four thirty in the morning and there was a truck coming around the corner and I could see the lights and coming, coming in. A good thing I saw the lights 'cause they don't stop. We now, they put up a yield sign, which for the life of me is the strangest thing because we can't see. We can't even see what's coming down Route fifty-eight if it's coming, you know, if it's heading, I guess, from the west to east. I guess that's more of an east or a south direction. But, um, so I don't understand how you can even, um, picture fifty trucks coming around that corner. We can, I, I mean, do you guys all, they can live there as it is a death trap right there.
So I think part of the question is to Sean, that's on Sean's side. And your side is can the trucks handle that intersection, right?
And in all honesty, I would have to say absolutely not when you have big trucks coming in around, around that corner from whatever direction they're coming in. That's a crazy intersection. You have the people that whip off Route forty-four and they think they're gonna outsmart the thirty seconds they're left in the traffic and they go and they do UEs in that spot there and, right? Um, it's, it's an absolute nightmare that, that, that Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know if they sell crack there or what they do, but people see Dunkin' Donuts. And I don't think that place, they see it and they just, they, they have blinders on. They don't look at our street coming in, they don't look at anything, but they see that, you know, it's, I'll, it's an accident waiting to happen right there and, you know, I don't know what the, who's prepared to deal with someone getting killed on that corner right there. Um, so those are some pretty major concerns. And like I said, for us, I mean, I know how noise travels. We lived through the sewage treatment plant, we lived through the, the, and the sand and gravel pit wasn't bad because there, the traffic was nowhere near thirty, forty, fifty trucks there at all. I don't think, it was, and I've lived there for twenty years. Like I said, we went through the sewage treatment plant and then the Wentworth did the, the Connecticut River and, um, Chit Tech and the fires. As a matter of fact, it was funny, we had a cookout one day and all of a sudden our friends from Carver, their, their pages all went off. And they ran and they were literally in the backyard fighting that fire back there, so, um, that is another concern with all the.
July fourth weekend.
Yeah, it was July fourth weekend. Yeah, exactly. It was the fourth of July.
It was great. I sat in traffic coming up from Dennis. It was awesome.
Yep. So, um, you know, there are some, some pretty big, big concerns. And then not only just this concern, but the fact that there's gonna be a plant going in. And I know all of our friends that have had problems with Cisco going in, it created a nightmare. And if you're talking about a million square foot distribution plant of some sort, of something, that's, that's, that's pretty, uh, lousy, for lack of a better term, you know? So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Kirkland, twenty, Montello. I just had a, a question regarding the access road. We live on the dirt road. Um, are the trucks going to come from both ends or just from the one end where the Dunkin' Donuts is?
I think it's currently contemplated that they would come off of forty-four onto fifty-eight and so from the Dunkin' Donuts.
Cause right now our road is basically a one lane, no trucks and dirt road. So there'd be no potential development to the road?
Correct.
Okay. And then the smaller secondary road off Montello, I think it's, it's called Off Montello. Is that gonna be used as well? So they could maybe go in and then come out, or is that gonna be utilized in a different way?
No, the thought is to only enter and exit, um, via park avenue.
Okay. And with the access road, those questions would be answered through MIPA? Is that the acronym that you used earlier?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I think we have to get the answers to some of these questions about the trucks. The thirty to fifty trucks, how it's gonna impact Montello Road Street, the intersection of Montello and North Main, the noise, the hours, blah, 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 blah. The bigger picture, the MIPA picture, is looking at one point two million square feet of distribution and the impacts that's gonna have on Montello, the intersection, da, 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 da.
And going further with, um, in the future to define actual hours, not generally. I know it's a term, 'cause you're not use, you're not defining the hours right now. Is it possible to get defined hours of work?
Yep.
And then if the hours are, are exceeded, someone to call that will actually do something about it.
The Planning Board will set the hours. Now, the law says we have to keep them competitive. I don't know what that means in this case. Usually we're dealing with hours of gas stations and stuff like that. But they'll negotiate hours and.
We did have trouble with tractor supply. That's why I asked for defined hours written.
They'll have defined hours.
And generally spoken to all of us.
And if they violate it, it'd be a violation of the permit.
And what happens in, in that case of a violation of the permit?
We pull them back in, maybe have another public hearing and we could pull the permit, I guess, if we had to. But has it happened?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just make one clarification on, uh, the trucks during this initial phase. That quantity of trucks isn't contemplated, um, each and every day or all day. Um, it's a very limited volume of material during this first phase. And so there's a lot of change that's taking place and this is that first step in the change that's taking place with the development of this parcel. And so it, you know, that's why I think it's good to have, uh, this dialogue and start having the conversation now because, um, if this, for this development to move forward, uh, this would probably be the smallest component of the construction phase, quite honestly. Um, and so that initial truck count is, is, is not all day, every day. If you just do the math on that, that volume of material, it's a very small volume of material overall. Uh, to put it in perspective, there's probably five million cubic yards roughly of material, natural resources that were mined out of this site over a period of time. And probably over the last twenty years, um, the truck volume has been, you know, in the hundreds of thousands. And this initial phase is really to bring in good quality, uh, construction materials in a preparatory phase. Um, Montello Street is definitely a challenge and we have to look at that, uh, more closely. But I do wanna clarify that that truck count isn't all day, every day in perpetuity. It was meant as a, uh, peak average, uh, that you might see, um, when material is being shipped in.
Right, but if you're talking about distribution company, you're talking about even more trucks as to the later points.
And that, and that, and that's where, I think, uh, one of the things that Mr. Hunter was pointing out and, and we, we tried to address is that, um, between here, where we are today and that point, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of permitting and public involvement that has to take place. This initial permit is really, um, to take what is a very blighted and decayed property and, uh, restore it back to a clean, pad-ready site. We do a lot of these projects and. We do a lot of these projects and, and, uh, this is probably one of the largest decadent sites that I've seen in the last twenty years. And, um, this initial phase is, is really just to stabilize the site. And then subsequent development activities will be subject to your input and a rigorous permitting process. So the work that's being contemplated now is to make the site better.
Oh, we know what's coming, basically.
Well, if, if, you know, but, but still through that, uh, still through that permitting process, those permits are, uh, well off in the future. And, and sitting here today, they're not, uh, by any means, we don't sit here today feeling like those are guaranteed. Uh, there's still gonna be a significant process to get there.
Yeah, and, and, and one other thing, uh, to, to put in a development of this size, you're gonna have to change the road system. And you're gonna have to change the road system to make it safe for this property and this development as well as the neighborhood. So I'm not a road expert, I don't know what that is, but y- y- you know, m- m- maybe it gets set, set up so that the trucks have one way to come in and go out. And the road system gets rerouted so that the neighborhood and the children of the neighborhood have a separate road system to go in and out, so that the two don't mix. Uh, and, um, you know, as Bob was saying, and Jack, and the chairman and everyone else, this is, this is the beginning of a very long permitting process. Um, and, and we, you know, we wanna be good neighbors. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll do our best to, to be good neighbors. And I, and I think, you know, at the end of the day, uh, we will make that road system a lot better and a lot safer. Maybe.
Be close to work.
So yeah, but, uh, yeah, if you could come up, please, uh, speak into the mic and, uh, give us your name and address.
Uh, my name's Gordon Massingham. I live on twenty-four Montello Street. Uh, my house is in Plimpton. My property board is the property, uh, in question here. I, my property also extends into Carver, so I'm also a Carver taxpayer. And, uh, when I heard that something was going to happen here, I thought it might be a good idea, because I love the term a decadent property. This is a disaster over there. Every kind of garbage, every kind of trash, dead animals, dead fish, toilets, household garbage, whatever it is that's been thrown in there without regard. And frankly, it's shocking that the town has not taken some steps to top, to stop this. And it strikes me that whatever happened here, the first step should be to clean up that mess. I'm not surprised if it isn't a, uh, public health hazard. So that's the first thing that concerns me. Now, uh, I found this presentation to have many shortcomings, beginning with this map. None of us understand what it's about. We don't know where Montello Street is, we don't know where Park Avenue is, we don't know where the brook is that separates my property from my neighbors, that empties into this property. We don't own any of these things. So it seems to me a much better map and a much better plan would help us understand what's going on here. And everyone's already, I wanted to belabor the issue of trucks. I noticed that some person said early on, and it was just covered again, that eventually there would be a separate entrance off of Route fifty-eight into this property. I'd like to see that first. Where is that going to be? I don't envision it. Maybe they have a better vision than I have, but where is that going to be? Why don't we do that first, so the trucks can enter there rather than going through this, uh, residential neighborhood? Uh, and I can't imagine trucks, I mean, if you've been down Montello Street, it looks like it was carpet bombed. There's so many potholes. Uh, and, uh, actually, Park Avenue was in much better shape than Montello Street. So, um, I think that it appears that the board is in favor of this project. And, uh, I would urge you to be a little more skeptical. And when you consider the things that are important, think about the people who live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right behind you, Bob.
John Allen, I live on Montello Street. Um, the ABC recycling, how loud is that gonna be?
It's not, well, it's-
Is that grinding up cement?
It's standard, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a very ABC material.
So besides the trucks, besides the trucks?
It's, it's regulated by the noise that has to be, to be generated in the property line and things, this is the type of equipment it's used.
So you're bringing all the stuff in and, and that's fine, you got it all regulated and everything else, but you're moving a lot of land and stuff like that. Who's gonna do all the water testing? All of us are on well. Who's gonna, who's gonna regulate that? Who, and what if, what if it is, gets contaminated? What are the contingencies after that? That, that means we're out of water.
This, this site, there's a lot of groundwater contamination at this site right now that's unrelated to anything that's, you know, that's going on or talking, discussing here. And there is a extensive network of groundwater monitoring wells, which will continue to be monitored, are the rate for plant fill, there's a series of wells out there that continue to be monitored. If anything changed in those wells because of the operation, you anticipate that?
And then with a, with an area this size, the light pollution is gonna be, it's gonna be like having a lighthouse in your backyard. You know? I mean, I know that's further down, but-
The town development, we have to, we certainly have to address directional lighting and things like that.
Directional lighting, I'm an electrician dude, I do this. I built Cisco, so I know what Cisco looks like, so, um, you know? I didn't want Cisco in my backyard, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Thanks. My name's Richard Jackson, I live at Heather's Path also. Um, I think most of my neighbors already addressed most of the concerns. I guess the only other concerns, uh, that I could think off the top of my head is, so the trucks that you wanna bring up, Montello Street, do you know, are you talking ten-wheelers or twelve-wheelers? Trail of dumps?
It would be trail and dumps and trikes.
Okay. Uh, the only reason I bring that up is cause I'm pretty sure there's actually a bridge on Montello Street. If not, there's a culvert that runs under the road. And I was just wondering, and there's actually no weight limit sign posted there. So I was just thinking that the town should keep that in consideration. And then, um, uh, I had one other thing I was gonna say, which kind of escaped me right now. Um, oh, so there was a proposed, I think, did you say it was a gas station across from Dunkin' Donuts?
Uh, there's a guy who has an option on the property-
Mm-hmm.
And he's working now with Mass DOT to see if he can put it there.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, so-
He hasn't come to us yet.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, would these two projects be considered together, the impact of the traffic simultaneously?
We are asking, we're not, we're gonna, if the gas station comes through, we're gonna ask them to coordinate with them.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And is that, that's coordinated by the town, or is that a state, because it's a state highway?
Again, they may have to go to MEPA, the, the bigger picture, the gas station, because of proximity to the highway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they haven't come to us yet. They're, they're still deciding whether to buy the property. They haven't bought it yet.
Okay. And then I was just wondering too, um, my, my neighbor Gordon brought up the, the dumping that goes on back there. Is there any plan to maybe enforce, like, you know, the laws that we have now to maybe keep that property a little cleaner or? I mean, I've thought about putting up trail cams back there to catch whoever the dumper is, because-
I just got a trail cam for Father's Day. I haven't used it yet.
And they're great, cause you can take pictures in the dock with no flash.
I haven't used it yet. Um, you know, it's their property.
Chuck, it's not our property, he's talking about, it's Wal, it's Walsh's property.
Hmm.
Well-
It's right off Park Ave.
Yep.
Yeah, that's Walsh's.
Right, when you first take the left onto the dirt road.
Different issue, I'll, I'll talk to the Board of Health.
Okay. I mean, it, it looks like someone actually attempted to clean some of it up slightly.
I know DEP was on their tails, if you will, and that's why it got demolished and the whole nine yards. I will ask about the dumping.
All right, and then, um, yeah, so if you could just also address the weight limit on that bridge and the trucks that'll be coming down Montello Street. Cause I was in the Air Force, I can attest that. It definitely looks like it was carpet bombed.
Well, we don't use those anymore, the laser guns.
I was in the Air Force too.
Ain't mine.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Duncan Chapman. I'm a, um, industrial real estate broker, state of Massachusetts, and representing, uh, Walsh Realty at tonight's meeting. First of all, I've worked in Carver for a good, uh, six or seven years. And I'd like to commend the town and also forty-four Development for the potential project that's being proposed tonight. As has already been stated, this is only the first step, but there's many, uh, great examples of, uh, gravel pits that have been cleaned up and, uh, put on the tax rolls. One that comes to mind is Atlas Boxing Crate up in, um, Sutton. That's probably, uh, more in the forty acre range, thirty-five to forty acres. Four hundred and forty thousand square foot development, three hundred and fifty jobs. Landscaping, grass, screening, everything you wanna see in a project. So I'm sure that's the type of projects that, uh, is being, will be proposed here at the end of the day. Let's see here. One question on the, uh, sounds like the first part of the construction project will be to upgrade Park Ave to be able to, and maybe even Montello Road, uh, to be able to get back to the site. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, so is there any thoughts on acquiring that thirty acre parcel from the Walshes?
Nice segue.
I'm sure there's been some thoughts about it, but we, we-
Just let's make a deal right in front of us, huh? That might be an unfair question, Mr.-
I think we have our hands full with the property currently on, but thank you.
Got you. Thank you.
Anybody else like to, uh, speak?
Well, seeing nobody, uh, getting up and seeing the hour that it is, uh, Mr. Chair, it's, uh-
I just had a couple things off-
Yep, go ahead.
-popped in my head. Um, I was wondering that for temporary truck access during this initial phase, if the applicant might want to reach out to Waterstone Properties and see if they might be able to get a temporary access through that area out to the site.
Um, I think it's gonna be difficult, not because of Waterstone, just engineering-wise. And I would make the case that these people would be-
A lot closer.
A lot closer and more burdened.
Okay.
I'm getting the sense that all of them are on that side of Montello.
All right, just a thought.
Not to mention the fact that that parking lot can't handle the draft coming through. Right, especially with sewage pipes that keeps coming up.
Yeah, I know, we, we had to deal with that all week.
Yeah.
Every time I turn around, there's seventy tanks of water.
Well, yeah, bubbling up.
I know.
Really?
Uh, the Board of Health's having a terrible time with that right now.
Just a thought. You corrected me. Very good.
Um, that's it, let's, uh-
Well, there's a couple things. I, I wrote a list of things that we gotta work on. I'll follow up with a memo to everyone on this. Um, what did I write down? Thirty, fifty trips a day, tire washer, Montello Road upgrades. I did talk to the, um, the DPW Superintendent about Montello Street, what he thought. This is Carver, not your guys. Um, and he, you know, he didn't know the ramifications. This is the first, I think, I've heard thirty to fifty trucks, so I'll have to follow up with him. He said it was so-so, is the way he termed it. Um, so we're gonna have to address that. Um, we, we absolutely need good maps.
Yeah.
We need a map with the streams, the wetlands, the Route forty-four, Montello, everything on there. I'd like the distance to the properties where these people live, the distance to the stream. Um, is there a bridge under Montello? I don't even know. Like, I, well, there, I know there is one. There's one right near, um, Aubashon.
The Hudson River flows under Montello.
Yes. Um, what else do I got? The hours of operation, I think we're gonna have to work on that and be sensitive that you are abutting a residential neighborhood. Um, the odor issue, I think Joe addressed that. Can the trucks handle the intersection? Um, is it possible, um, just to the board and to you, can we make sure and mo- mandate that all trucks go south on Montello, not north? I don't see why they'd wanna go north, but, you know? And then the maps. So I think they're the follow-ups I'll give to everybody. Um, I think you absolutely have to have a site visit with everybody. Uh, I am gonna ask the DPW Superintendent to come. Um, is there anyone else you'd like me to invite?
Fire chief.
The fire chief.
I would invite, uh, police representative just because of the, that intersection.
I'll have a policeman as well. I have a whole good time here. It's gonna take a while, this is a big piece of property, so I don't think this is a half hour site visit.
Yeah.
Um, and typically, you usually continue hearings for two weeks, but I don't know if we're ready to turn this around in two weeks. I'm looking at the applicant here.
I, I think there's a fair amount of things you could try to address and try to answer before we come, come back to you. Yeah, might be more appropriate.
So I guess I'm looking, A, to schedule a site visit, and B, I would recommend you continue this to July twenty-eighth. And it would have to be at seven-thirty.
Maybe a motion on the continuance.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to seven-twenty-eight at seven-thirty.
A motion to second, those in favor?
All right.
So July twenty-eighth, seven-thirty. And a site visit. Not next week. Wow, then it's the Fourth of July already?
Yep.
How did that happen?
It's like that.
Um, Monday's a holiday in Town Hall, believe it or not. I don't know how that happened. I don't know when to have it. Um, I'm thinking you have a water commission meeting at five on Tuesday to close out bills. It's gonna take an hour at least. No, that's a thought. It's still light out, right? You're only closing bills on, where it is, how about six o'clock on the seventh?
No, I said the sixth, not six o'clock.
Town Hall's closed, I won't be here, you don't need me.
Seven.
The seventh at six?
I don't have a problem with that.
All right. And where are we meeting? That's a good question, isn't it?
Dunkin' Donuts.
No. No, they, I don't know what they're selling there, I'm not going there again.
Actually, you should sit in the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot and watch how much-
I have.
But I suggest you do it in the morning and, yeah.
Only Will's up there early over here. Well, no, Chad is too.
Put his trail cams on.
Tiki Kai.
You should do it about four-thirty, five o'clock, when we're, when people are coming up and see what it's like.
I guess at the entry, you would go into Park Avenue, right, right where, you go into Park, past where the sewage treatment plant is, and before you go into the property, so to speak.
Right.
So we'll meet there on the seventh at six, but I'll need a motion on that.
Yeah, it, we'll, we'll have, uh, I mean, I have a truck, I can take three people. I got a truck too. I'm sure-
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Make a motion for the site visit for the seventh of July at six P M.
Have a motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make sure police, fire, and DPW are there.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
I entertain a motion, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you, everybody.